I want to call the regular Bussaras City Council meeting to order for March 5th, 2024 at 7:00 PM. Please stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
The Pledge of Allegiance is issued by the citizens of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call.
Myers.
Here.
DeShawn.
Here.
Shireman.
Here.
Moritz.
Here.
Sherrick.
Here.
Hickman.
Here.
Me.
Here.
Before you are the minutes from the February 20th, 2024 regular council meeting, the February 22nd, 2024 special council meeting, the February 29th, 2024 special council meeting, does anybody have any questions on those minutes? Any motion to accept them?
Make a motion.
Second.
All favor.
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Granting permission for visitors to speak, we have requested by Mr. Greg White five minutes.
Greg White, 1125 Hillcrest Drive. Thank you, Mr. President. First of all, I'd like to thank the Service Committee for their special meeting. It was great that most of the people who attended were open and spoke in such professional manner to one another during that meeting. Once again, thank you. Second, it is my understanding that the Bussaras Tourism and Visitors Bureau has their bookkeeping in order. However, I still believe that since the tax money is being used to fund this bureau that they should not be given any funds until a full review is completed. This shall include that all documents, records, bank statements, minutes of the meeting are made available to the public. Remember, since this bureau receives tax money, that this falls under the public records laws of the state of Ohio. Third, the ordinance 12-2023 was not done properly to call for a vote tonight. This council should uphold their policies and procedures on any and all legislation brought before this government authority to the city of Bussaras. My letter submitted to the council president states it clearly on this matter. Rules were violated. In fact, why did this council accept the EMS contract and then you're going to repeal the manpower ordinance on Thursday night at the Health and Safety Committee? This does not make any sense. What I believe to be true is that most of you don't have any understanding of EMS and how it works. Basically, you want to go from advanced life support service back to basic life support system services. That means you don't care about the quality of service to the residents of Bussaras or to the West Join Ambulance District. What happens with the hard-stim transport from Bussaras to Gayatt? According to all of you, we don't care. It takes two medics and an EMT for this transport. Then you don't have enough personnel to answer the call of another EMS or fire call. Councilman Mead, you really believe that the all-call of the fire department personnel is going to work as you think it's going to? These people make plans on their days off, vacations, trips, family events. They're just not sitting around all day waiting to see if they get called in. Maybe you should check on this matter to see the turnout on all calls and what it costs you. Other things that this council needs to look at is the ISO, which is the Insurance Service Office, the ability to protect the community and determine property insurance cost, the NFPA Code, which is the National Fire Protection Association, for firefighter safety and other issues. I know this council is in a bind about money and believe that's all you see, money. Why not wait until the administration and the labor could work something out? Look at property tax issue. I have come before this council before and said this in many avenues to look at this as another alternative, but you leave the end result. It is something that you all have to live with, especially when someone dies. Thank you.
Any other, or, sorry, we have another visitor that's requested five minutes, and that would be Milton Underwood.
Milton Underwood, Dallas Township trustee in the south end of the county for the last 24 years and been a volunteer fireman for the last 33 years. I want to thank council for, once again, for passing 207-2024. And we had a meeting and we did accept the terms and conditions of the contract at a ambulance board meeting. And we appreciate Service Director signing that and look forward to working with the terms and conditions of that contract. And I want to thank these guys personally because I think I've been on a run several times with them, even had to drive the squad a couple times. They do a good job out in the townships. I'll speak for the township side. Just about every run's got somebody out there that'll help show up and help one of our fellow citizens out and help these guys out. They do a good job. And I think the residents of the township and of the city are got a good professional EMS service along with the fire here to work with, so, thank you.
Mr. President.
Yes?
Well, there, I would like to respond to Mr. White's letter that he submitted to council and had placed in our council packet and which was on documents on demand for the public to review. Am I allowed to do that at this time?
Yeah, I thought he was going to read the letter since he requested the five minutes, but I guess since it's in the package, you can respond to it.
Or maybe if I could, would you like to have it read before she responds? That way everybody knows what's being said.
Well, can you come back and read your letter, Mr. White?
I have a copy. Do you have this? Do I have a copy? I got a copy. You're welcome to read mine.
Once again, Greg White, 1125 Hillcrest Drive. This is to Council President Kurt. On Thursday, February 22nd, 2024, during the Health and Safety Committee on the Agenda for the Fire Department Staffing repealing ordinance 12-2023. According to the videotape recording, there was a discussion between myself, the president of the Joint Ambulance District, and committee members on this matter. There were only three members present for the committee. Kevin Myers was absent. Then Councilman Vicki DeShawn asked for a motion to repeal ordinance 12-2023. James Mead made the motion, and then Aaron Sherrick said no. Then Chairman Vicki DeShawn stated that there was a tie and that she was the tiebreaker. With the Law Director's advice, she stated yes. The major problem with this is that the city of Bussaras council policy procedures were violated in this matter. First of all, there was no second made on this motion by either Aaron Sherrick or Chairman Vicki DeShawn. Second of all, there was no official vote taken on this motion. Chairman Vicki DeShawn did not call for a vote of those in favor of nor against, but only then after this can she break the tie. Third, since the city of Bussaras Law Director has issued issues and has made numerous derogatory statements against the fire department, according to these policies and procedures, this issue, repellence of ordinance 12-2023 that is coming to full council on Tuesday, March 5th, 2024, shall be removed from full vote and tabled until a full investigation is completed. Since the city of Bussaras Law Director has made comments about the fire department, he cannot be impartial or handle this matter objectively, and outside councils should be hired to verify the proper council procedures and policies and procedures were or were not followed correctly. The video of the committee meeting speaks for itself on this matter. As council president, you are in control and are overall responsible to the entire council of the city of Bussaras. When there is a complaint about matters of this council, you must investigate this matter to see if it's valid or not. Thank you.
Did you want to address something in the letter, Vicki?
Yes, please.
Okay, go ahead.
To the first comment that I ask for a motion to repeal ordinance 12-2023, yes, I did ask for a motion. After Mr. Me made the motion, I asked, do I hear a second? At that time, Ms. Sherrick responded by saying no. As confirmed by the video recording, at no time did I say that there was a tie and at no time did I say that I was the tiebreaker. On Friday, February 23rd, I received inquiries from both a telegraph form and Crawford County now questioning if ordinance number 12-2023 was repealed or if the motion died. In researching the matter, I discovered that procedural errors had occurred, at which time I contacted Law Director Gernert. On Tuesday, February 27th, I informed Attorney Gernert that council and the public should be informed at the March 5th council meeting of these procedural errors. He agreed. Mr. White is correct that a second to the motion was not made. I will admit that I was unaware until this past Tuesday while attending an OML conference that as a chairperson, in addition to being able to break a tie, I can also make a motion, second a motion, and vote on a motion. On the morning of Thursday, February 29th, I informed Clerk Wise of the procedural errors and requested that this matter not be placed on the March 5th, 2024 council agenda. On Friday, March 1st, I also informed Chief Schwemle of the procedural errors and that I had informed Clerk Wise that this matter was, again, not to be placed on the March 5th, 2024 council agenda. I did, however, inform Chief Schwemle that the matter would be placed on the March 7th Health and Safety Committee meeting agenda. I was not aware until I received my council packet late yesterday afternoon that the matter had been placed on tonight's agenda. So at this time, I am requesting that ordinance number 14-2024 be pulled from tonight's agenda and returned back to committee. In response to Mr. White's comment that an outside council should be hired to verify that proper council procedure, policy and procedures were or were not followed correctly, I think we all agree that the proper procedures were not followed. There is no need, therefore, in my opinion, to hire and pay outside council to verify that they were not followed. Unintentional procedural errors were made and immediately brought to the attention of the law director as soon as they were realized. Over the past year and a half, my neighbor, Mr. White, has called and visited my home on numerous occasions concerning city matters. In fact, he even called me today on a city matter. Had Mr. White contacted me on these procedural errors, I would have explained what happened and what corrective steps were being taken. I'm here to ensure the citizens of Bussaras that when I make a mistake, I will not hide it. I will disclose it and attempt to correct it to the best of my ability. I do have other things to say. I will say those when I give my Health and Safety Committee report. Thank you.
I think when we do get to the Health and Safety Report Understanding Committee reports, I'll ask for a vote then to amend the agenda and remove the ordinance you're talking about at that time. But at this current time, is there any other public participation?
Fred Fisher, 430 Stevens Court, president of the Loretta Schimmler Museum. To give you a little bit of an update, we are going to have a pancake breakfast on the 25th of May. That will just be the breakfast only. And then we're working with the Preservation Society and the Historical Society running a shuttle bus because that's the Saturday of hobo days that the, and the Historical Society is going to open up. And so those people that fly in, we can shuttle them in to participate in that event. We're also doing our fly-in on the 21st, and I want to extend an invitation to all of you, which you'll be getting something in writing for the pancake breakfast. But on the evening of the 19th, we're going to have a reception at the Hoard Hangar at the airport. And Cynthia Burrows, who wrote the book about Loretta and aerial nurse corps and all of that, is going to be there and be the guest speaker. And as part of that, I've got some extra copies here. There's some slightly less than five acres of land that is to the east of the hard surface runway and parallel to the south side of the sod runway that is currently being farmed. It's a little under five acres, and we would like to request, I think maybe the Plating Committee, I understand, to have that excluded going forward from being used for crops so that we would have some extra space for people and hot air balloons and things like that. There would be no additional cost to the city. Hoard Family Farms currently mows and maintains the land north of the east, or the north end of the runway, the safe zone, and they mow that and bail it at no charge to the city. They would plant this, mow it, and bail it at no charge to the city as well. And then as part of the museum, over the years, there's been about 15 feet kind of plowed under on the south side of the sod runway on the east end, and we promised to get that mowable and grass seed planted in so that the runway is actually as wide as the published. So I just have some sheets here that have some drawings so that you can kind of see what that is and appreciate your considering giving up that little bit of acreage so we have some more room for people.
So you said May 25th is the pancake breakfast?
Only.
And the fly-in?
So we're doing it, so our September event, we have like four big, like PBYS and some warbirds coming in and a flea market and a car show. That's more of an all-day event. On Saturday, the 25th, we're just going to have pancake breakfast.
Okay, so what was the 13th?
The 19th of September. September is when Cynthia is going to, we're going to have a reception, and she's going to do a presentation and talk about Loretta at the Hoard Hangar, and that'll be open to the community as well, but just would like to get you to mark it on your calendars for now. You'll all be getting a written invitation with it as well. So here's, if you want to just add, this'll give you a little, there's a second page, there's a letter, and the second page kind of shows you visually what we're talking about. Huge amount of land and no real expansion to the city, not only now, but going forward. I'm sorry. Well, the land, so when you have a runway, there's a fan that goes out up to Beale Road, and that fan off of the end of the runway is just mowed. That's kind of like if you lose your engine and you got to land early, you got a safe place to try to get down, although that one's a little challenging as a pilot because right toward the end of it, there's a ditch, drainage ditch, and that's not necessarily good on airplanes if you're, but anyhow, they already mow that, that's city property, and they already plant alfalfa in there and mow it. They have agreed to do the same thing for this other little acreage that's inside the airport area. The land west of the runway, there's some 40 acres there that's going to be in crops anyhow, that's already leased out. So we'd just like to ask you to consider giving up those two little pieces of land there, and then we can get the runway back to the full width and the sod runway.
I have a question for you, Mr. Fisher. The east of the runway you just described and possibly not farming it and putting it into a hay field, do we need to refer that to public lands and buildings?
Yeah, I don't know where that, yeah, wherever you need to refer it to.
So.
I assume something has, and Brian, maybe you can tell, when we put the taxiway in, I don't know if the city ever altered the contract for whoever's farming that because we took out more than five acres, took out more than five acres to get the taxiway in. That was part of that land. You can kind of see the drawing, there's a long yellow line on there because that picture that I have is a Google Earth map while the taxiway was under construction, so that's not exactly.
And the purpose of this with the hay field would be so that you would have additional parking for the flyers?
Yeah, cars, people, hot air balloons.
So can I have a motion to refer the farmland around the airport to public lands and buildings for consideration of more parking space for the airport?
I'll make a motion to refer the land to the airport use.
And it's just a small portion of what is being leased out.
Okay, all favor?
No.
All opposed? Okay.
Thank you.
Yep, thank you. Any other public participation? Okay, I had, oh. State your name and your address.
My name and my address? My name's Jack Wilin Vanik, and I live at 335 OMLR Drive here in Bussaras, Ohio. Okay. Okay. My name's Jackie Vanik, and I am the owner of the Vanik Laundry Co., which is a laundry pickup and delivery business, and I service multiple counties across central Ohio. I am here today because I have spent the past year trying to find a location that fits my business needs here in town. I'm not going to beat a dead horse, but it's obviously been a big issue for a lot of business owners that are trying to get a property, buy a property, rent a property to run their business out of. In doing so, I explored the option of operating from home and dug into local ordinances, which I have learned about our Home Occupation Ordinance 1187.03. This allows business owners to work from home residentially as a secondary use to the dwelling as long as it's not more than 25%. But most importantly, it brought me to the ordinance off of that, 118701, which is in regards to the accessory building and structures which strictly prohibits business owners to operate a business out of an accessory building on their own property. I am here today to protect the idea, or to project the idea, that an addendum be written to this zoning code so that a small business owner like myself, and when I say like myself, there's no in-and-out traffic, I do not own a laundromat, it's just me, I just need a place to do my business the way I want to do my business, which is meeting all my sanitary guidelines, all of the whole picture. So other business owners like me that can utilize assets that we already own and pay taxes on to bring economic value and desperately needed community support to the area. This addendum can outline certain businesses to qualify for this type of zoning approval, like really however you see it looking, as long as my business falls into that, I'm okay with. But I think that there's other people that own businesses here in Bussaras that work from home. There's other mothers like me, I have two kids, they're both in school, my husband works full-time. I was working full-time up until the end of 2023, and then I quit my job and I stay home with my kids and I work on my business. I just need a place to do so, and I cannot find one around this town that's not at least like $900,000 or $160,000, but I have to rip the entire thing apart and maybe spend $20,000 on like an environmental audit and everything else. So, this, like I said, this addendum can outline a certain, the certain businesses that qualify for this type of zoning approval, however you see it looking, giving the city and the people that live in it a chance to raise their families, grow their businesses without having to go out of city limits to do so. And I think that's super important for this community at this time because it's dissipating. So, please consider this idea as a part of the city's economic plan to bring more small and large businesses to Bussaras. And that's all I got. Thanks.
Yeah, I'd like to refer her request to the Plating Committee.
Is this, before you do that, Jim, is the whole zoning ordinance in the whole entire zone?
It's part of one zone.
No, 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 the entire zoning code, isn't it in open projects right now? I don't know. Miranda?
I don't think so.
You don't think it is?
Just to be safe, I'd like to refer that to the Plating Committee specifically to home occupancy.
Thank you.
Okay. All favor? All opposed?
So that'll be on for the committee, which will be Thursday at 6:00 PM.
I'll be there.
6:00 PM, Thursday.
Thank you.
Karen, do you want to address public participation here with this letter?
Should I do it here?
You can, you can read it from there.
Yeah, because he's referring to council, so. Carolyn Shireman, 1065 East Beale Avenue, Bussaras. I would like to take this time to defend myself against the rude and deceitful comments that was made by Adam Heinlein, the Bratwurst Festival president, concerning me on February 20th, 2024, at our regular council meeting. As a council member, I wanted to communicate with Adam concerning the Bratwurst Festival financial reports and the contract between the city of Bussaras and the festival. The council was looking into the funding that the city was paying for the safety forces and trash pickup during the festival. I found his name on Facebook and sent him a private message, which you will find on the last page of your papers here. A private message asking if he would send me a friend request. I gave my name and I was on, and I was on council. I tried to send him a request, but Facebook would not let me because it said I did not know him. I waited a few days with no response. I spoke to one of my colleagues and was told where Adam worked. I called the bank and asked if I could speak to Adam. The lady asked me who she should say is calling. I said Carolyn Shireman from the city council. She put me on hold, and after a few minutes, she told me Adam was not in. I said, okay, thank you. She asked me to try back tomorrow. The next day, I call back, and the same girl answered and recognized my voice. I asked if Adam was in and told her my name again. She put me on hold, and after a while, she came back and told me Adam left for the day. I asked her if she knew when he would be back. She said she did not know. It was at that time it became apparent to me that Adam was avoiding me. I called and talked to another of my colleagues, and they thought the same thing I did, he was avoiding me, or perhaps was told not to talk to me. So I called another colleague and told them the situation I was having trying to get ahold of Adam. That colleague told me that being a member of council and the decision council would soon be voting on, I would be one person he should be talking to. In that conversation, I was given the name of the Bratwurst Festival's attorney. I called the attorney twice. On the first try, I left him a voicemail with my information. I did not get a return call. On the following day, I tried again, and this time he spoke to me. I told him who I was and what I was inquiring about. I was told that there was no contract between the festival and the city concerning the safety forces. He said he would have been the one who would have wrote it up. I asked if he wrote the permanent agreement between the two. He did not have any knowledge of the agreement. I asked if I could make a record request for the years 2022 and 2023. He said I should get ahold of Adam for that information. At that time, I informed the attorney that I had been trying for a week to talk to Adam, and I believed he was avoiding me. At that time, the attorney said he needed to give Adam a call. I asked if he would give my information to Adam. He said he would. Days went by and still nothing from the attorney or Adam until Adam came to the council meeting. That was the first time I ever seen Adam Heinlein. With this statement I am making publicly, it is important to me that I let my colleagues and the citizens of Bussaras know that in no way did I harass Adam at work. I did not get to talk to him, and I was advised to call back, which is exactly what I did. My question for Adam Heinlein is this: What are you, as the president of the Bratwurst Festival, hiding from the city? Why won't you show council the past years of the financial records we are asking for? I would think you would be willing to work a little harder with council when asking for our services. And finally, I would like to say that I am not seeking an apology from Adam Heinlein. He should be apologizing to the citizens of Bussaras, Ohio. Respectfully, Carolyn Shireman.
Okay, is there any other public participation from out there? Seeing none, we're going to move on communications and particip- Seeing none, we're going to move on communications and petitions. We have a letter here from Tracy Keegan with the FOP. I will read the letter. Unless you want to read it. "To Bucyrus City Council, February 21st, 2024. Subject Cruisin' with the Cops: Custom and Classic Car Show, the Bucyrus Lodge #68, FOP Incorporated. Respectfully, request permission to close the following streets on Saturday, June 8th, 2024, for the Cruisin' with the Cops: Custom and Classic Car Show. We would like to close the 100 block of East Warren Street from 7:00 AM till 12:00 AM midnight for the Food Court, Sandusky Avenue from Mary Street to Oakwood from 12:00 PM to 12:00 AM midnight. We would also like to close Washington Square, 100 blocks of East and West Mansfield Street, 100 block of West Warren Street, 100 block of East and West Rensselaer Street, and the 100 block of East and West Charles Street from 12:00 PM till 12:00 AM midnight. Your attention and support of this matter would be greatly appreciated as this is a great event for our city. Respectfully, Tracy Keegan, Treasurer, FOP Lodge #68." We also have a letter from the Bucyrus Police Explorers. Well, a letter from Captain Tom Walker with "Bucyrus Police Explorers" as the header. "To Bucyrus City Council, Date: February 23rd, 2024. Honorable Bucyrus City Council, Greetings from the members of the Bucyrus Police Department and the Bucyrus Police Explorer Post 229. We would like to submit this letter as documentation of our intent to hold the Bucyrus 5O Bike Show in downtown Bucyrus on Saturday, July 27th, 2024, from noon to 7:30 PM. The Bucyrus 5O Bike Show is an annual fundraiser for our Police Explorer Post 229 and is a primary source of funding for operations, equipment, and youth activities. We have consolidated our area to the east side of the Washington Square, including the east, most north, south alleyway and city-owned parking lot located between Millennium and Picking Parks. Bender setup begins around 9:00 AM that morning and the event ends at 7:00 to 7:30 PM. This is one-day event only. The Bucyrus City Administration has graciously donated trash cans and wooden barricades, as well as limited personnel to assist in placement of concrete barriers and cattle gates, traditionally donated by Councilman Kevin Myers. We are genuinely grateful for their continued support in helping to maintain the success of this program. Should you need any further clarification or have any questions, please feel free to let me know. Regards, Captain R. Thomas Walker, Commander of Bucyrus Police Department, Exploring Post #229, Executive Board."
Mr. President.
Yes.
So I have a point of clarification. I do not donate anything. Those are donated by the Bratwurst Festival Board. I just facilitated him picking them up.
Okay.
And I would like to make a motion to send both of these to Health and Safety.
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? We need a motion to accept and file these two letters.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Standing, well, okay, approval of council rules of procedure. I would like to move this to the end of the agenda tonight. First of all, because standing committee reports, there's going to be a report on that anyway, and why give the report after it's passed? So can we have a motion to move, to amend the agenda and move approval of council rules of procedure to? I'm going to think.
New business.
New business?
I'll make that motion.
Are you moving this for what reasons? You're not planning on going through this page by page, are you?
No.
Okay.
Well, I don't, honestly, we'll talk about it when we get to it, but.
Well, I just need to understand your reasoning so I know how to vote.
You mean to vote on moving it?
Right.
Okay, so when we went to the, well, first of all, you're going to give a standing committee report here because it's a special ad hoc, Vicky Deschon Chair.
Mm-hmm.
Why would we vote for it prior to your report when, you know, if we vote on it right now, it's going to do, something could potentially happen with it, and then you're going to give a report that's irrelevant because it already will have passed or did something. And second, my other reason is when we were at the OML thing on Saturday, some things came up with like how many votes it takes to pass something on committee, and I kind of almost think we need to take the rules. We need to have one more meeting and address that issue with it. Because we found out at the OML thing that a four-person committee, three making the quorum, you need three to advance something out of the committee, and we've historically here only been getting two votes. So that's kind of the issue, my main issue, why I think we need to have one more meeting and because, you know, you could write in, you could write in our rules that in the absence of one committee member, it only takes two to pass something, is what we were told on Saturday. So I kind of don't want to pass the rules as is at the moment, so I was wanting to move it to the end of the agenda right now.
And your thought is that that matter would appear in the rules of procedure rather than in our codified ordinance?
Aren't you addressing both in the ad hoc?
Correct.
Yeah, well. Yeah.
Okay.
So I'm asking for a motion to amend the agenda and move approval of council rules to new business.
I made that motion.
Second?
All in favor? All opposed? Okay, it's moved. Okay, standing committee reports, plating committee, Mr. Chairman, me. What's that? Public Lands and Buildings Chair?
I have no report at this time.
Health and Safety?
At the regular Health and Safety Committee meeting on February 22nd, the following topics were discussed. Appointing an ad hoc committee for the creation of a property maintenance code for the city of Bucyrs. Penalty fee for Bucyrs Codified Ordinance #189.22 dealing with tenant roster, and repealing of Ordinance #12-2023 dealing with fire department staffing. And I would like to elaborate a little more on that. When discussing Ordinance #12-2023, I informed the committee at that time of two conversations I had with Chief Schwemle. I stated I had questioned if the union would be willing to sit down and discuss the money situation and overtime, now that there was a new administration and council, and stated that the chief expressed his opposition and explained why. On Friday, March 1st, Chief Schwemle reminded me that my true question to him, and to which he had expressed opposition, was if the union would consider giving back some of the money that they were receiving as a result of the approval of the Factfinders Report by the former administration and council, since they were receiving more than what they originally asked for. Chief Schwemle is correct in his recollection of our conversations. And I apologize both to him and the fire department for my misstatement. A misstatement that we also discussed the fire department's overtime because we did not. Thank you.
Did you want to pull the 14-2024 off the agenda?
Yeah, I already asked that earlier.
Okay, can you make a motion?
You want me to repeat that?
To amend the agenda and pull that?
At this time, I move that Ordinance #14-2024 be pulled from tonight's agenda and returned back to committee.
Second.
All in favor of amending the agenda as she just stated?
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, 14-2024 is off the agenda tonight. Moving on to finance, Mr. Myers.
I'm going to defer to Mr. Me since I was not here to run that meeting to see if he has anything to report.
Economic Development, Mr. Hickman.
I had attended the forecast breakfast last weekend and can say with a good conscience that Crawford County is doing very well financially in terms of driving Ohio's economy. Do not have a direct word for how Bucyrs is doing in that regard, but I can say that Crawford County is doing within 3%. Is all I have.
Okay, Service Committee, Mr. Moritz.
We are currently still working on Bucyrs Codified Orders Section, or Chapter 900 section. We're going to bring up 93102 Thursday at that meeting to discuss some of the stuff on that.
And that's already in committee, right?
That's already in committee, yes. That's all I have.
Okay, and then the Special Ad hoc Committee on Council Rules and Procedures.
The ad hoc committee approved the rules of procedure for Bucyrs City Council. Along with some minor changes made to the rules, the maximum time given for public participation during each of the three opportunities to speak has been increased from three minutes to five. Council also approved, proposed, approved, proposed Ordinance #11-2024 regarding Bucyrs Codified Ordinance Chapter 111 entitled Council, Rules of Council, and Bucyrs Codified Ordinance Chapter 113 entitled Ordinances and Resolutions, both chapters reflecting minor changes.
And then Traffic Commission, Mr. Mayor. If you turn the mic on.
On Traffic Commission, we just talked about several things. We talked about the speed limit on West Stone Street, on Southern Avenue, and we talked about possibly selling the Wendy's parking lot and adding a stop sign to Pearl Street. We are. And that was about it on Traffic Commission. Thanks, sir.
I'm going to ask, because I always get asked, do we have any questions for Traffic Commission?
Why would we talk about selling a parking lot at Traffic Commission?
It was at Wendy's, just. There were two parking lots around Wendy's. We just talked about, I'm going to actually put them in committee tonight.
I'd say, yeah, that would be Public Lands and Buildings.
Yeah, it's in there.
It's in his Service Director's report.
Yeah, it was just brought up and so we're, that's something we just talked about, so.
Need a motion to accept the committee reports collectively?
So moved.
Second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Report of City Officers, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. President. The administration is appointing Jeff Dunn, Service Garage Foreman, to the Traffic Commission, retroactive to January 2nd, 2024. And it's according to 307.01, the commission established for members. This appointment does not need City Council approval. And I would also like to refer Ordinance 931.09, Funding of the Solid Waste Replacement Fund, to the Service Committee and to my report.
Does anybody have any questions for the mayor? I need a motion to refer Ordinance 931-09, Funding of Solid Waste Replacement Fund, to the Service Committee.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, Erin was second. Okay, Service Director's report.
Thank you, Mr. President. The Dudley Street Sewer and Water Separation Project is complete, as far as that part, but there will be mill and paving this spring. We did have a Traffic Commission meeting on Friday, February 23rd, and we discussed Pearl Street and the city parking lots around Wendy's. I'd like to refer to Plating, Health and Safety Committee about adding a stop sign for 90-days trial for Pearl Street. And I'd also like to refer to Lands and Buildings and Finance Committee about selling the parking lots around Wendy's. Think they're no longer needed as a city lot. Would like to buy some land between the tracks, where our Forest Main is going across the river, the north side of the town where the CSO 5 is, a little on the north side of the river and a little on the south side of the river. It's about, it's about one acre. I'd like to refer this to Service and Finance Committee as an emergency because we were told EPA already there, this was going to go out to bid. This is where the line broke in the river just about a month ago. And we have a chance to buy that land. So. There is a there might be a potential selling the North Fire Station. We had a lady from the Ram Corporation call and ask if we would be interested in selling it. I'd like to refer this to Public Lands and Buildings and the Finance Committee also.
What's the Ram Corporation?
It's a corporation that houses like, it's handicap, yeah. They, they, they're right now working out of Mohegan. They're like a babysitting thing.
Day hab, they're a day hab?
Residential services.
Yeah, it's for adults.
Is that the end of your report?
Thank you, yes.
Okay. Anybody, first, does anybody have any questions for Service Director? Yes, Mr. Mayor?
I don't know if they go to the Service Director or Mayor, so I'll ask you both. Two questions they have. There's been a lot of ongoing talk about Omni Fiber and all their installations. I came about with the Service Director today. There were some things that happened on East Warren Street over the last couple of days, and Tom and I met out there today and looked at them. But one of the things we discussed today was maybe having, you know, a lot of the residents in town don't know that it's not the city that's doing this. You know, I've seen a lot of people, you know, very good saying the city's doing this, the city's doing that. So I think it's important to note that, you know, while we do give them, you know, permission to work through a permit, you know, we can't really stop them from doing the work in the public right of way. And also, the stuff that I learned today was that, you know, we are being reimbursed by them for damage that they're causing. I think that's important to state. And so maybe just putting it out there for the public that if you have property that you believe has been damaged because of them, to call, I'm assuming to into the mayor's office and have Lisa make note of that. And then, you know, you guys can look at it and make sure that, you know. Because if I were to look up on the internet the phone number to Omni Fiber, I'm going to get press one for English and then I'm going to get placed on in the autodial system where you guys have the right people to call and have a conversation with the decision makers. So I think it's important to let the public know all of that information. And so I appreciate all that, and appreciate you meeting me out there today. And then my other question to you both was, has there been any movement on labor negotiations within the fire department? And that's something we've talked about with looking at this legislation that we had in front of us. And I had made the statement a couple of weeks ago that I'd like to see, you know, how this goes first. Has there been anything you can report as of this date?
I don't have anything.
Chad actually asked me today if we could meet again, so we're going to meet again this week, so.
Thank you.
Yep.
Erin?
And on the Omni Fiber, I understand they are to work in the right of way?
Yes.
And if, I don't know if you guys reminded them the other day when they were out in our neighborhood of that, but they were tramping through people's yards, through their flower beds. They had a whole meeting of about 40 people in the neighbor's yard. They had a whole meeting of about forty people in the neighbor's yard.
That's not even Omni Fiber.
Yeah, that's not.
That was, it was awful. They were very rude. They blocked both sides of the road, had people sitting there waiting to get through while they had conversations between their vehicles. The neighbors are looking at me, and I'm like, I can't do anything about it. It's government money. It's not even ours. And they're looking at me like, are you sure it's not the city? Positive, it's not the city, but at the same time, I mean, I, I don't know how many people they ticked off, but I know I was quite angry watching them just saunter through people's yards to go over to the right of way. Like, okay, there's a way in there that there's specifically, and they're just straight through, just trampling everything. I know my one neighbor was really upset because she just started getting tulips, and those are no longer, so.
And to follow up, so you know, both Tommy and I have been out there. We were out there that day.
Yeah.
Actually, you know, stopped and checked on all that. Like today, we were on Warren Street and following up, and that was part of the, that was part of the thing that we had just implemented. There was no bonding out there at all. When Omni Fiber came to town, what, eight months ago, there was no bond in there. So they didn't necessarily have to fix anything that they were breaking, but now we went ahead and put a million dollar bond on them. So it's a guarantee that they're not just going to walk away, so.
Thank you.
And the next thing is, is that I had asked Brian, we have Brightspeed in town right now, and they're the ones that are starting next on putting this underground fiber optics in. And so I went ahead and put a request into Brian that he goes ahead and puts in, write up a policy for Brightspeed, and asks for a million dollar policy that they have to adhere to as well, so.
Thank you.
James, did you have a question?
So not only does it cover water lines and sewer lines that they accidentally run into, because they're sidewalks too, because I hear they're busting up a lot of sidewalks.
That was my issue.
Okay.
Yeah, that was Kevin's.
Yes, Kevin?
While we're on this topic, so, Mr. Gurnard, I spoke with you this morning about this as well. You'd mentioned to me that we have the authority to poll their ability to work.
Yes, we issue permits to work.
Who has the authority? You or their office to pull it? Would you guys consider polling Brightspeed's ability to work until it bond is signed, please?
We can.
I'd like to see that, that way it gets done, because if you, if they're damaging things and right now there's no recourse, you know, if it takes them a week to get it signed, so we have.
Another, what we had given, what we had given Omni Fiber, we gave them two weeks. So I don't know.
However you want to address it, but I'd love to see that so that we don't have residents that are getting their, their property destroyed with no recourse.
I'll add the, I don't know if Omni Fiber's still doing it, but last summer they were, before they were going down a block, they were actually going to each door and hanging a door hanger. Saying, is that still being done?
No.
I don't think they're doing that anymore.
I was over on Warren Street yesterday, and they were just walking down spray paint and digging.
That, that could be something that our permit says, when their issue says thou shall hang a door hanger, notify residents, and just, that way they kind of know what's going on. Maybe have a phone number call, yes.
Just to follow up on it, when we met with them, what, about four weeks ago?
Yep.
That was one of our requests. We asked for door hangers, and we also asked for yard signs to be put in, in the block that they were working on. And Frost Line is the company that's actually the subcontractor for Omni Fiber, and they promised us that they were going to do it. I didn't realize that they weren't doing the door hangers or the yard signs until right now, so.
Is Brightspeed doing any of that, the door hangers?
No, it was going to be up to Frost Line. Well, Brightspeed, no, as of, no, I'm not aware of Brightspeed doing it.
Well, I'd recommend you poll their ability to work until they meet your request, too. I mean, if you've got that authority, then by God do it.
Mrs. Deschawn.
Brightspeed is out in our area of town. They started on our street yesterday. They finished in our yard today. We had four huge holes, but they were very professional. Yes, they did get on our own personal property. I'm watching, I'm taking pictures, but it's like, hey, I've gone out, I've spoken several occasions with Andy, who is their contractor or their lead guy, very nice gentleman. He's answered every question I've asked. They have put everything back. You would never know, they, you would never know they were in our yard. And today, when we had our pouring down rain, they sat in their trucks, and I told my husband, well, surely they're not going to stay and wait for it to stop raining. They did, and once it stopped raining, they were back out. And so as far as I'm concerned, what's been done on our property has been great, and that is M and M, who is subcontracted out under Brightspeed. And again, Andy and, we've had nothing but good with them.
To follow up on it, Tommy and myself and Jeff Dunn and John Ernsberger, in this process, we've learned one thing is what's been done in the past dealing with this fiber optic company. They would issue permits coming out of the zoning office, and they would issue multiple permits where they could work in all different areas of the city, and we were having a hard time keeping up with having the water department and the street department and the sewer department trying to keep up with the Omni Fiber, because instead of just staying in one section of the town, they were going everywhere. And so we were having trouble keeping up. So when we sat down and started talking together, now what we've done is they've run out of all their permits, we're only down to like three permits, and so by us dribbling these permits out going forward, we're able to control where they're going in the city, and that will slow the process down for them, but it will also make our process a lot better so we can control the idea that maybe they won't be running into so many water lines. Hopefully, that's the positive out of it.
I have a question for the law director regarding a permit or such like that. Could the city stipulate on the permit their, you can only have so many of them machines working at the same time?
Sure.
So you could slow them down that way?
Yeah. Yeah, you could create all kinds of stipulations on granting that permit.
Yeah, and you could put on the permit the door hangers must be hanged out, hung out. Did you have something else?
Yeah, I do have one more thing. We've decided as the administration and a couple of the foremen's to put one of our own people out there with them, too, to follow them around and make sure that everything's going good. So we're going to have one city employee with them at all times.
One for Omni and one for Brightspeed?
They're actually going to, they're going to travel. They're going to be between all of them. I mean, they'll be, you know, like, they'll be with Omni for a little bit, then they'll go out and see what Brightspeed's doing, and they'll probably go to maybe another Brightspeed crew and an Omni crew, and then we're going to try to, and it won't be the same routine every day. They're going to jump back and forth. They'll never know when they're going to show up, so.
I think that's a good idea.
I think it's a great idea.
Does anybody have any other questions for service director?
Okay, the referrals on here, so I think additionally, some of that stuff needs to also be referred to public lands and buildings. Thinking of selling city parking lot around Wendy's, public lands and buildings and finance, okay. There was another one I seen on there that I thought needed to go to.
Was it maybe this one?
Oh, the CSO five.
Yes.
Shouldn't that go to public lands and buildings, too? Because it's a public land if we buy it.
Sure.
And should it go to finance as well?
Yeah, it's an expenditure.
So service.
It's already going to.
Okay, it's got finance on there. So. CSO five, the land around CSO five needs referred to service, finance, and public lands and buildings. The Wendy's needs referred to public lands and buildings and finance. Wendy's parking lot, city parking lots around Wendy's. The stop sign for a ninety day trial on Pearl Street to Plating and Health and Safety. Well, that's what he's got it on here as. And. North Fire Station. Potential selling of it to public lands and buildings and finance. So can I have one motion for all of that? Being referred.
All fair?
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, law directors' report, Mr. Gurnard.
Thank you. So the first item, and obviously, the council as well as the public is aware of the issue with the health and safety passing or asking for legislation to be repaired on ordinance twelve dash twenty twenty three, so not going to beat a dead horse. That's already been asked to table that and put it back in committee, which obviously was not procedurally done correctly, so we'll have to work on that. Ryder Heilbronz, I got a letter from Captain Work, Ryder Heilbronz has been historically required to mail a letter to Captain Stevens and Connie Casero prior to her passing, prior to emptying their recycling bins so as to allow for no parking signs to be placed on Songer Street. After Ms. Casero passed away, the police department reached out to the residents in this area and have discovered that this requirement was no longer necessary. As such, the police department would like the traffic commission to revisit this issue and terminate the notice requirement. It's no longer applicable. So just a heads up, but I would also like to put that with the traffic commission. And then I've been contacted by a two thousand nine recipient of one of the home improvement grants that were administered by the city of Bucy. This was a statewide program where local communities were awarded grant monies to pass along to residents in need of home improvements, provided the home is kept for a certain amount of time. Eighty percent of these loans were forgiven. This loan was for forty four thousand six hundred and seventy seven dollars. As of May fourth, twenty twenty four, the fifteen year period will have run, and the owner would only be liable for the remaining twenty percent or eight thousand nine hundred and thirty five dollars and forty cents. This owner has reached out to me and has desires of being able to sell the property a few months early, to be able to move her family into a home which is more accommodating to her disabled child's needs. So I would simply ask for council approval by voice vote. If council so chooses, I can reach out to the homeowners, indicate that we would be willing to allow them to sell that property a few months early without being required to pay the additional four thousand dollars, which wouldn't be waived until the May fourth, twenty twenty five, twenty twenty four date. We would still be collecting the remaining eight thousand nine hundred and thirty five dollars and forty cents, which we wouldn't waive.
Anybody have any questions for the law director?
We don't need to refer the traffic commission thing up there with Ryder Ha, because that traffic commission can bring that up on its own, right?
Yes.
Okay, this community housing improvement thing with, does it even say the address of the house?
I probably didn't put it, but.
Does anybody have any discussion on possibly voting on being okay with doing that?
I have no problem with that.
Yeah.
You're literally asking for sixty days, right? I'll make a motion to allow that.
To allow that house sale to happen?
Yes.
And Aaron seconded it? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, moving on. Auditors' report.
Revenues for February were a significant increase over February of twenty twenty three, mostly buoyed by the point two five percent safety forces levy. We're up a total of fifteen percent between all three funds, including three percent in our general fund and fifty two percent in our safety forces. In the next month or two, we will likely see a loss, at least in the general fund. That is normal, so we will need to keep an eye on the overall trend throughout the year. Onto referrals. I would like to refer to Finance Committee, the creation of consumer trust funds for utilities. When we receive utility deposits and write checks for those deposits, each utility or enterprise fund must be separated out. We must create new consumer trust funds to be tied to each enterprise fund if we want a part of those deposits to pay for sewer, stormwater, et cetera. Referring the creation of an OVI fund, the police chief brought to my attention that there should be a separate fund for monies received due to OVIs. And referring the creation of a debt fund for the new wastewater plant. I would also like to add that the income tax department's extended hours can be found on the city's Facebook page, and that is all.
Does anybody have any questions for the law director?
Can I make a motion to collectively give a referral?
Second.
All fair?
Aye.
All opposed? There's no treasury report, right?
Nope.
Police chief, no report. Fire chief, there is a February fire report in here.
I'll make a motion to accept the file.
Second.
All fair?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion to accept the city officers' reports.
So moved.
Second.
Kevin was second. All fair, say aye?
Aye.
All opposed? Visitors' input regarding reports of standing in special committees and of city officers. Is there anybody out there that wants to have input on any of that? We don't see any. Consideration of proposed legislation for the first time.
Proposed ordinance eleven dash twenty twenty four. It's an ordinance amending and supplementing chapters one 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 council, rules of council, and one one one, and one one three ordinances and resolutions of Title III legislative of Part One Administrative Code of the Codified Ordances of the City of Bucy, Ohio. Next, we have proposed ordinance twelve dash twenty twenty four. It's bond requirements regarding the utility right of way. Amending and supplementing section nine oh three point oh one entitled permit required emergency exception for public, public utility under chapter nine oh three entitled street excavations under title one entitled street and sidewalk areas under part nine entitled Streets Utilities and Public Services Code of the Codified Ordances of the City of Bucy. Next, we have proposed ordinance thirteen dash twenty twenty four. It's appropriations regarding the Marx Grant. Amending and supplementing ordinance number fifty dash twenty twenty three being the annual appropriations ordinance for twenty twenty four by appropriating from unappropriated general funds, the sum of eighteen thousand five hundred two dollars and forty cents to the contractual services line item within the fire department category within program one security of persons and property subparagraph within the general fund and declaring an emergency. And then we have proposed resolution two eleven dash twenty twenty four. It's the property of one one four five West Mansfield Street. A resolution authorizing the Bucy City administration by its mayor or service safety director to enter into an annexation agreement attached hereto as exhibit A with Bucy township and declaring an emergency.
Need a motion to accept those, the first reading?
So moved.
Second.
All fair?
Aye.
All opposed? Public participation, any member of the general public may present their input or comments on legislation that's been read for the first time. Does anybody want to give public input on any of those? Yes.
I would like to ask Mr. Modersohn questions on the resolution number two eleven, twenty twenty four, dealing with the eleven forty five West Mansfield Street.
Could you come to the podium, Mr. Moore? Could you come to the podium, Mr. Mott?
Good evening. Yes, ma'am.
I had some changes to resolution 211, 2024, and I had sent those to Miranda. She has made those changes. Now, I don't know if, has Mr. Mott been made aware of those changes?
I was given a, I was given an amended copy. I then looked over. Basically, this was prepared by the prosecutor's office as a township, but I also knew that that we'd made some changes to it.
Now, the resolution, excuse me. He prepared the resolution?
No, he did not, but...
And that's what I'm talking about, the resolution which you prepared?
Okay, I prepared it, but I know there were some changes about it.
Okay, and you're okay with?
Yes.
Okay, great.
I was okay with it.
Okay, great.
The whole issue of that is procedurally messed because of the way that the zoning was done, but yes, I agree that was done, that's, that's okay.
Now, the annexation agreement?
Yes, that was done by the prosecutor's office.
Correct, that was done by the prosecutor, and you signed, approving it as to form. I also have changes to that annexation agreement, which I emailed those to the clerk. Were you provided, I mean, I'm not sure who needs to look at these changes. Would this be that of Mr. Crawl or?
So Mr. Mott has seen those changes, but then you guys, on the new, Mr. Mott has seen those, but you guys...
I would have to approve them as your acting law director. I would, it would have to be approved by me or the city to say that I agreed to the form.
Okay.
Since Mr. Gurnard's out because of the conflict?
Correct.
I would have to have been the one to review it, and I did review the amended form.
And you approve it as to form?
Yes.
You approve the amendments that I was suggesting?
Yes.
Okay, great, thank you.
And then that would go back to, the amended one, if you guys pass it, it would go back to Crawl?
Correct.
And I think the big issue, or big amendment to this annexation agreement that was prepared by Mr. Crawl, is the fact that he states in it that it is the fiscal officer on behalf of the township that will petition the Crawford County Commissioners to amend the township boundaries, when in fact, according to Ohio Revised Code, section 503.07, it's actually the City of Bucyris that has that responsibility. And you had set that forth correctly in the resolution that you prepared.
Yes. But the trouble with this, the way the statute's drafted, it's sort of, the township has given some, I think the commission, the law director or the prosecutor is trying to get the township as much authority as they possibly can, but the fact is, the land is now in the control of the city, but certain things had to be going through to get the commissioners to approve distribution.
So you do agree that it is the city who's going to be responsible to petition the Crawford County Commissioners to conform the boundaries, now that we're taking this property totally out of the township and putting it into the city?
I'm saying that the city has got to be the one making that demand. If the township doesn't agree with it, I think it throws it all into the, back to the commissioners again to figure out what the real line is, but the answer to your question as to the city's concern, I would want the city to be the one making that request, yes.
And so with the city making that request, then that is going to be work that will be seeking you to perform the petitioning to the Crawford County Commissioners?
I will be happy to do it if I'm directed to do it. Obviously, I was not directed to that particular part. I was, I was hired basically to deal with the forms we got right there. I was not asked to go ahead and do the next step, but I will do that, of course, if that's what the wishes of, of the administration and the council are.
And I guess the question is then, because we sought outside legal counsel to deal with the resolution, is it not necessary for us to continue on and have that outside legal counsel to also finish up? Because part of the process of this resolution is the petitioning to the Crawford County Commissioners of the conforming of the boundaries. And once that's been done, then the county auditor's office can prepare their paperwork and then have this taxing district 55 eliminated, and then the township will no longer lose
Are you saying we shouldn't pass this right now?
Oh, no, I'm not saying that at all.
I don't, I...
No, no, I'm not saying that.
My recommendation is you pass it. What she's basically suggesting is, is that if we go ahead into the next step, but I think before we can go to the next step, we've got to make sure that the, the agreement is signed by both the township and us before we, we kick it over into the petitioning the commissioners. So I haven't seen that the township has signed it. I know that the law, that the prosecutors has looked, will look at it, and he'll be concerned about his, our changes, and then it'll be a decision of whether they approve those changes, and then if not, then we'll have to come back in and have another discussion. Then we will go to the county commissioners and say, this is what we want to do.
So, so just to be clear, we need to pass this, Vicki, and then the administration directs Mr. Mott to continue with the next step? Is that what?
Well, to muddy the waters. I've looked over the resolution that Mr. Crawl prepared and which the Bucyris Township trustees signed, and in this resolution, along with some minor errors, he also sets forth in here that it's the township's responsibility to petition the Crawford County Commissioners.
But our resolution does not say that. It says that the city, which means that we do not necessarily have an agreement until both sides' documents equate. So we will submit ours back to Mr. Crawl, and then he'll decide whether he's going to agree with it, or he's going to come back and we're going to be continuing this discussion. But the answer is, I would pass the resolution and the agreement and pretend like we are prepared to go forward, because if not, we're going to slow the whole process down.
Okay, now, in response to that, about slowing the process down, I did talk with the Crawford County Auditor.
Yep.
And I've talked with her on several occasions, and she informed me that that we really have, or I should say the township has, until August
Right.
to get this all done. But with that being said, I got an email from her that states, because I questioned if there was an urgency for the City of Bucyris, for the City of Bucyris Council to pass legislation to enter into this annexation agreement. And again, while we have, or the township has, until August to get all of this taken care of, the email from Mrs. Sheets did state, "The annexation process can be complex and time-consuming, especially when it intersects with other statutory requirements. Because there are additional steps and agencies involved with the annexation process, prior to the point of updating property records resulting from an annexation, coupled with the timing constraints imposed by the mandated property reevaluation, she feels it is necessary that this annexation process be done efficiently and timely." Now, if I may, I do want to point out that when I questioned Mr. Crawl as to when they found out this situation was a problem, and he indicated it was fall of last year, and I questioned, well, then why are we just now being told about it? Back in September, the state auditor gave to the auditor's office, or I should say, that Mr. Hoffman, who's, Mr. Hoffman, who's the president of the Local Government Services, and it's a firm that provides consulting services relative to local government matters, stated, here's the steps you need to follow. So the township was following those steps. Well, then in January, they discovered, oops, that's if you have a regular annexation. This was an expedited type-two annexation, so the steps were different, so they had to start all over again. So that's why it's, there's just been a little, you know, I mean, mistakes, and as we all know, we all make mistakes. We're all human, but that's just an explanation, you know, as to why we are where we are. Now, my only concern is if we pass resolution 211, in this resolution, oh, wow, I just noticed resolution isn't spelled correctly. I didn't pick up on that. It says in here that this resolution authorizes the city administration to enter into this annexation agreement.
Right.
Well, since we have changes to this annexation agreement, I guess, are we comfortable with passing the legislation which says we're going to enter into this not knowing if the county, or not knowing if Bucyris Township is going to come back and say, oh, yeah, we agree with you?
I think they're going to come back and say they agree with us.
Great, okay, then with that being said, I'm, I'm fine with...
Other than the Scribner error?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, my only comment is...
Thank you, Mr. Mott.
My only comment is, is when I went to OML, the 10 mil thing was brought up, and I believe this may be the only time in the history of the entire state of Ohio that this issue has came up pertaining to the elected legal representation for the municipality in question of the taxing district. I, I think this is the only time this has ever happened, so we just made history here in Bucyris.
I'm sure that we all wanted to make history on this thing and this situation.
Okay, any other questions or any other things regarding the first reading, now or never? Thank you, Mr. Mott.
All right, thank you.
Yes, thank you.
Consideration of proposed legislation for the second time.
Proposed ordinance 9-2024, it's bond requirements regarding sewer taps, amending and supplementing subsection D of section 923.17, entitled Initial Sewer Connection Charge, System Access Permit and Fee under chapter 923, entitled General Provisions, under title V, entitled Sewers, under part nine, entitled Streets, Utilities and Public Services Code of the Codified Ordinances of the City of Bucyris. And then we have proposed ordinance 10-2024. It's the vacation of Jackson Street. Vacating part of Jackson Street being the 166.01 feet in length on the west side and 166.01 feet in length on the east side, and 50.02 feet in width, beginning at the south end of Jackson Street between in lot 2390 and part of in lot 2387 and 50.02 feet in width at north property line, part of out lot 381, being more fully described herein below. Proposed resolution 206-2024, it's the Bratwurst Festival street closures, authorizing and directing the public service safety director of the City of Bucyris, Ohio, to ban all vehicular traffic, including bicycles and skateboards, except authorized emergency personnel for the 2024 Bucyris Bratwurst Festival, according to the schedule set forth herein. Further authorizing and directing the chief of police to make necessary arrangements for the rerouting of traffic on federal, state, and local highways and roadways. And then we have proposed resolution 208-2024, it's the EMS billing rates, accepting the EMS service fee rate schedule as presented by the Bucyris Fire Department and authorizing the implementation of said rates commencing November 1, 2024.
Need a motion to accept the second reading?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Public participation, any member of the general public may present their input or comments on legislation that's been read for the second time. Anybody? Don't see anybody.
Mr. President?
Yes.
While I appreciate the help of Mr. Mott, I think we can let him know that you're no longer needed, so if you want to leave, since you're on the clock, you've answered all the questions that I believe we have, so do not feel necessary that you...
Or if he wants to continue to stay, he could stay and maybe not be on the clock.
Well, yes, thank you.
Okay, no other public participation, so we're going to move on. Consideration of proposed legislation for the final time.
We have proposed ordinance 5-2024, it's the establishment of the Bucyris Trails Committee, authorizing and directing the mayor of the City of Bucyris, Ohio, to create and establish the Bucyris Trails Committee for the City of Bucyris, detailing terms of office, duties, responsibilities, and finally, operations. And then we have proposed resolution 205-2024, it's the proposed airport runway projects, authorizing and directing the mayor and the public service safety director on behalf of the City of Bucyris, Ohio, to enter into a contract with Crawford Murphy and Tilly, Inc., 8101 North High Street, Suite 150, Columbus, Ohio, 43235, to upgrade the current runway lighting at Port Bucyris Airport not to exceed $750,000. Further, authorizing and directing the city auditor to issue a warrant or warrants and payment therefore from the appropriate appropriation or appropriations.
Need a motion to accept the final reading?
So moved.
Second.
We'll go with Aaron first and Chris second. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Public participation, any member of the general public may present their input or comments on legislation that's been read for the final time.
Read it off 210 Ethel Street. I just want to take a second and say thank you, Mayor Truca, Tommy Starner, and the rest of city council for working on this ordinance 5-2024. You've done something in the last couple of months that the previous administration could not do with the Trails Committee, and I'm looking forward to see where we can go with it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other public participation? Seeing none, we are referring all that stuff back to the originating committees. Committee report on pending legislation, public lands and buildings.
Public lands and buildings is favorable, sorry, to ordinance 5, 2024, Bucyris Trails Committee.
Service committee.
Service committee is favorable of ordinance, proposed ordinance 9-2024 and proposed ordinance 12-2024. That would be bond requirements and sewer drafts.
Plating committee.
Plating committee is favorable to proposed ordinance 10-2024, vacation of Jackson Street.
And then on the next page, there's another one, James.
And we're favorable to proposed resolution 211, 2024, 1145 West Mansfield, agreement.
Ad hoc committee.
The ad hoc committee is favorable to proposed ordinance 11-2024, dealing with Bucyris Codified Ordinances, chapters 111 and 112.
dealing with Bussaras Codified Ordinances Chapters 111 and 113.
Finance committee.
Finance is favorable to proposed ordinance 13-2024, appropriations for Marsh grants. Finance is favorable to proposed resolution 205-2024, the airport projects. And finance is favorable to proposed resolution 208-2024, EMS billing rates.
Health and safety.
Health and safety is favorable to proposed resolution 206-2024, the Bratwurst Festival street closures.
Okay. The 13-2024 appropriations with the Marsh grants. For the second and third reading of proposed ordinance 13-2024, do I hear a motion to suspend the rules, waive the readings of the caption and text, and declare it an emergency?
Some moved.
Sherrick?
Yes.
Hickman?
Yes.
Me?
Yes.
Myers?
Yes.
DeShawn?
Yes.
Shireman?
Yes.
Moritz?
Yes.
Do I hear a motion to adopt proposed ordinance 13-2024?
Some moved.
Second.
Sherrick?
Yes.
Hickman?
Yes.
Me?
Yes.
Myers?
Yes.
DeShawn?
Yes.
Shireman?
Yes.
Moritz?
Yes.
Ordinance number 13-2024 is duly adopted. The next one on the agenda has been pulled. Resolution 211-2024, which is 114, 1145 West Mansfield Agreement. For the second and third reading of proposed resolution 211-2024, do I hear a motion to suspend the rules, waive the readings of the caption and text, and declare it an emergency?
I make a motion.
Second.
Moritz?
Yes.
Myers?
Yes.
DeShawn?
Yes.
Shireman?
Yes.
Sherrick?
Yes.
Hickman?
Yes.
Me?
Yes.
Do I hear a motion to adopt proposed resolution 211-2024?
Some moved.
Second.
Myers?
Yes.
Hickman?
Yes.
Me?
Yes.
DeShawn?
Yes.
Shireman?
Yes.
Moritz?
Yes.
And Sherrick?
Resolution 211-2024 is duly adopted. And then the next thing on here is the ordinance 5-2024, establishment of the Bussaras Trails Committee. This being the third reading. Do I hear a motion to adopt proposed ordinance 5-2024?
Some moved.
Sherrick?
Yes.
Hickman?
Yes.
Me?
Yes.
Myers?
Yes.
DeShawn?
Yes.
Shireman?
Yes.
Moritz?
Yes.
Ordinance 5-2024 is duly adopted. And then finally, resolution 205-2024, which is the airport projects. Do I hear a motion to adopt proposed ordinance? I'm sorry, resolution 205-2024.
Some moved.
Chris, Chris is second.
Sherrick?
Yes.
Moritz?
Yes.
Hickman?
Yes.
Me?
Yes.
Myers?
Yes.
DeShawn?
Yes.
Shireman?
Yes.
Resolution 205-2024 is duly adopted. Old and unfinished business. Oh, yes.
Under old and unfinished business, had previously referred the Bratwurst, had previously referred resolution number 218-2021, which deals with the city providing the necessary safety forces and cleaning services to the Bratwurst Festival at no charge, as well as the permanent agreement referred to in resolution number 218-2021. Again, had previously referred that to incorrect committees. So, I'm assuming this would be under old and unfinished business. So, I am now moving that resolution number 218-2021 and the permanent agreement referred to within be referred to the finance committee.
Do we have a second?
Second.
On favor?
Aye.
Aye.
On opposed? Those are both referred to finance. Any other old and unfinished business? Okay, new miscellaneous business. Creation of the ad hoc committee for the purpose of discussing and creating a property maintenance code. We had asked the public if anybody wanted to be on that committee, and we had gotten some responses back, which I'm trying to find. Do you have?
I can pull it up for you.
There, just grab it. Okay. We have 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6. We had six people apply. And this is the additional people in addition to, I'm assuming we want to put some council people on.
I believe you said two from the administration and two from the committee, or else the committee.
It really isn't said in stone. We can make it whatever we want.
I'm just saying, you said, that was what had been suggested.
Mr. President?
Yes.
Mr. Stuckert, would you like to come to the podium and again reiterate what you were proposing? The membership be comprised of?
Yes, sure. Bill Stuckert, 205 North Spring Street. My proposal for the sad hot committee was for two members of the city council, two members from the Property Maintenance Appeals Board, and three members of the residents of Bussaras.
Now, when you state two from city council, correct me if I'm wrong, but I think you had mentioned the health and safety committee?
I think you actually said the health and safety committee.
Are you still of that?
That's correct, yes.
Okay, thank you.
And after two property maintenance appeals board?
Thank you.
What did you say after two?
Three. Oh, three members of the residents of the city.
Three residents of the city? So, that's a total of six. I thought you...
Four and three is seven.
Two from city, from the service, oh.
Oh, I'm sorry, I can't count. I can't count, that is...
Two from the property maintenance appeals board. And three residents. Seven. And I did state that you could have more than seven if you would prefer to have more than seven, but I suggested at least seven.
Well, there's some good ones on here. I'd hate to leave some of them out, you know, that have applied here. So, my thoughts, I have not missed, I have, I have not met this Mr. Barton, but he, Miranda had said that he had very quickly sent an email saying he would like to be on there.
I can verify that. He's really good at what he does. He's done it his whole life. His father also did his whole life too. So, that is, that would be really good.
So, I thought, you know, he seems like a good one. And then Mr. Long, he's very active at coming stuff and giving ideas. So, I thought it'd be good to have him on there. Carolyn, I don't know. Do you want to be one of the two on city council that's on there? Takes care of one of them. I'm, I'm assuming you, you'd be very good to be on there, Mr. Stuckert, since you're, now, you're on the property maintenance appeals board.
Yes, I am.
Okay. And then Mr. White, he could be one of the ones, the residents. So, how many does that give us here? One, two, three, four, five. We need another one from the general public. So, the only one we got left is Sue Me, so she could be on there. So, we need another person from city council.
I'm not sure that I can be on it because I'm not in health and safety.
Okay. I thought, I thought it was just two on city council that was on it. So, you, you're backing out then? You don't want to be on it?
I'm not on health and safety.
Well, who on health and safety wants to be on?
I'll do it.
Are you?
I'm on it.
Okay, so we'll put Aaron Sherrick on here.
Isn't Vicki the one in charge, or Jim Meatwell?
205 North Spring Street. I would like to recommend Mr. James Me to be on the ad hoc committee because he is also on the Board of Building Standards and Appeals, which also deals with the property maintenance issues as well.
So, the only problem I would have is Sue's my wife, so... I don't have a problem with it. Is the public going to have a problem with her being on here? Is that ethics, would that be a violation of something?
Sorry, just have one or the other.
Right.
But, I mean, if you want to do it as a member of council and as a member of the Build a, Bill, Board of Buildings, Building, yeah.
Board of Building Standards and Appeals.
That one.
She still lives in your ward, so she could tell you what she thinks.
Right.
That's what I'm afraid of. But maybe start over when I go home.
Who was the other person from health and safety that wanted to be on it in addition to Aaron? In addition to Aaron?
Mr. Me.
Well, he's on the property, he's the one.
He's on health and safety.
He's on both.
Yeah.
But it's him being on it, which one is that filling, though?
He's not the property maintenance.
Oh, he's not on property maintenance field?
Who else? Who else is on that board?
Yeah, who else is on property maintenance? Property maintenance appeals board.
Ron Boris.
Ron Boris. Steve Piper.
Have you talked to any of them?
Jared Miller is also a landlord. He was talking to you about it one time.
Jared Miller's on property maintenance appeal board?
Yes. He is the last one who's on the board.
Well, let's put him on it. I, I, I did kind of talk to him somewhere, and he kind of gave me an indication he'd be, he'd be interested in maybe being active in something.
Troy Farmer's also.
Read that off 210 Ethel Street. Are all these people, do they have more rental properties? Do we have anybody on this committee that's only owns one house? Is this all, what are we looking at here?
Um, I mean, Mr. Barton, I'm assuming is...
Mr. Me does, Jared Miller does, Greg White.
It's not going to be full of all?
Greg only owns one house. I'm assuming Mr. Barton only owns one house.
I just don't want to see it being...
Mr. Stuckert, you only own one house?
Six houses.
I own two properties, but our second property is mine.
So, there's, there's a mix.
Okay. I just want to make sure it wasn't all...
Heavy one way or the other.
Right. Since you're up there.
Yes, sir. Is there still an open spot?
Yeah.
Put me down, Kurt.
Well, I got, I got, this is who I got so far. Two city council health and safety people, Aaron Sherrick, James Me, property maintenance appeal board, Bill Stuckert, Jared Miller. That's four. And then three residents, Richard Burton, Greg White, Ken Long. We could put an eighth on, and you could be the eighth.
I'm a resident.
Are you okay with that?
Yeah.
So, Ray?
Mr. President?
Yes. Do you want an even number?
I'm a resident, so why can't I be on it?
I thought you just backed out of being on it.
I'm not in health and safety. That's why I backed out. You have, he wants health and safety.
We could put nine on there. Then we're not in even numbers. So, Carolyn, you could be number nine. Is that okay?
As a resident?
Yes. So, we have Aaron, Sherrick, James Me, Bill Stuckert, Jared Miller, Ken Long, Greg White, Richard Burton, Ray Thidoff, Carolyn Shireman. So, we have a total of nine. Is there any discussion on that? Do we want to have a vote to create the ad hoc committee with those nine members?
I'll make that motion.
I'll second it.
On favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? So, we have created the ad hoc committee with nine members. Okay, moving on then. I had, we had moved the council rules and procedures. Vote to accept them. So, so Vicki, when we were at the OML thing, and we were talking to, I believe his name was Stephen Smith. He pulled, we asked him, if you have a four-person committee, what's, what's a, is two people a quorum, or is three people a quorum? He said, well, three peoples are quorum. Two is not a quorum, so three's a quorum. I said, okay, so how, how many does it take to pass something out of committee? He said, well, three. You have to have three yes votes to pass something out of a four-person committee. He said, and then he kind of said, well, unless you have something on your ordinances that states otherwise, as in like, in the absence of one member at the meeting, and then you only got three at the meeting, do you still need three yes, or can you make it two at that point? And he, he said basically, you can have an ordinance kind of tweaking it a little bit, because he said, it really doesn't matter. He said, because it still has to go to full council, whatever comes out of committee anyway. So, in light of that, and in light of, you know, adopting rules tonight, and then maybe having to adjust them again, do you want to hold off maybe on adopting them tonight and discuss this issue with the three and the four-person committees?
Just as I brought up earlier, this situation that you're talking about does not appear in the rules of procedure. It appears in the ordinance that deals with codified ordinance chapters 111 and 113. So, I'm saying if you want to do some tweaking, it should be in the ordinance.
So, we could, so what you're saying, we could still pass the, the rules thing and then change the ordinance separately?
Yes. And as far as the rules of procedure, that's just a voice vote. And then, of course, the ordinance, we've already had one reading because we're not passing that as an emergency.
Right. Yes, Karen?
The paragraph that I questioned you about, did you want to speak on that, or?
Oh, you go ahead and answer your question.
I don't have my copy with me, but in page, actually, it's on the first page. Where was that at? Okay, it's under C miscellaneous. Where it says, "All requests for legislation shall be submitted using a request for legislation form to be completed by the council clerk and signed by the president of council or committee chair requesting legislation as soon as possible, but no later than by noon on the day following committee meetings." I asked what, just what the reasoning was for the council president, and she explained to me was if something comes out of council as a whole would be where the council president signs. So, I just asked if that sentence could be rewritten to state something of the nature that would be signed by the president of council when legislation comes from council as a whole, or the committee chair when legislation comes from the committee.
Or an ad hoc committee.
Well, that would still be their chair, their chairperson.
So...
So, it doesn't change the substance of it. It changed, it, it further explains.
So, if I'm understanding you correctly, we are going to schedule another special ad hoc committee, at which time we'll discuss what you're talking about and amendment of...
Which would be something that would go in section 111.
So, at the same time, then we could address the rules of procedure.
You want to pass the rules of procedure right now?
No.
You want to pass the rules of procedure right now and then address them again?
No. Why would we approve this, only to turn around and send it to committee and change it?
Exactly. That's why, that's why the whole thing I said was, do we want to pass this tonight, or do we want to kind of hold off on it?
But what you were saying is you didn't want to pass this tonight because you thought this is where the issue that you're talking about appears. It doesn't. It appears in ordinance. So what I'm saying is, as far as the rules of procedure and ordinance number eleven dash twenty twenty-four, we'll refer those back to committee.
I would be totally fine not passing that tonight and having another ad hoc committee meeting and then, rather than just, let's just do it all one time.
So then, as far as the ad hoc committee is concerned, are you fine? Am I allowed to do that at this time, that we schedule a special ad hoc committee meeting this Thursday after the regularly scheduled committee meetings? Or because of the length that some of these meetings have been going into, would you prefer that it be a, on a separate day? I'm fine either. Kevin?
My opinion on that, it sounds like you don't have a whole heck of a lot to iron out. I think you could do that all five minutes.
Yep.
Silly to have a special days meeting for a five minutes.
Great, then Miranda, I'll get with you as far as an announcement then for a special ad hoc committee meeting this Thursday. Okay, thank you.
I'm fine with that.
Thank you.
Okay, any other new miscellaneous business? Yes, Chris?
I have a contact by somebody in my ward.
Oh, can you bring your microphone?
Been contacted by somebody in my ward who wants to get rid of a property. It's Let's Drive. I, I'll bring it up on Thursdays. I'll bring it up on Thursdays meeting. That's just something new that just came up.
So would we need to refer that to plating?
If you want to bring it up Thursday, yeah. If I can bring it up Thursday, then we can refer it to plating.
No, we need to, we need to refer it tonight to talk about it.
I want to make a motion to refer it to plating.
Refer Let's Drive to plating?
Yeah.
Zion, you're the second?
No, I wanted to add to that. I do believe the public lands, wait, no, not the public lands, I always get that next up. The, the Park District had a meeting. Their last meeting, they invited Dylan Wyatt to talk about that, that property, in which I do believe the Park District was in favor of letting the city take that back over for the, the reason that was given.
Okay, so Chris first did that, referring that, Aaron second did it?
No, it was me.
Oh, James, James is second. All in favor referring Let's Drive to plating, say aye. All opposed? Any other new business? Seeing none, no council members need excused. What all referrals do we have?
Do you want me to read them?
Please.
We have the referral of Bussaras Codified Ordinance nine three one point oh nine, funding of solid waste replacement fund to service. The ninety-day stop sign trial on Pearl Street to plating and health and safety. Selling of city lots by Wendy's to public lands and buildings and finance committees. Purchasing of land in regards to the EPA regulations to service and finance and public lands and buildings. We have the selling of the North Fire Station to public lands and buildings and finance. Creation of consumer, consumer trust funds for utilities to finance, creation of an OVI fund to finance, creation of a debt fund for the new wastewater treatment plant to finance. The proposed land for the airport to the Public Lands and Buildings Committee. Business home occupancy zoning to plating. Street closures for cruising with the cops to health and safety. Bussaras five oh bike show to health and safety. Resolution two eighteen dash twenty twenty-one to finance, and the permanent agreement also to finance, and then Let's Drive to public plating.
Need a motion to adjourn? Oh, wait a minute, whoa.
Let's Drive should go to public land. If the city's going to take...
Public lands and plating?
I'm not sure if it needs to go to plating, but if the city's going to take, acquire it, it would be, yeah.
So do you want me to make a motion to have that sent to public lands as well?
Hold on, hold on. You want it in both? So I need a motion to amend the original referral of Let's Drive to plating. It was originally, Chris had made the motion, and James is seconding it. I need a motion to amend that referral and additionally include public lands and building.
I'll do that.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
Okay.
What?
I thought you were adjourning, and I wanted to say something.
Oh, what do you need to say? Because that's, I'm going to adjourn.
Okay. I just wanted to clarify, there is going to be another meeting with the administration, Chief Schwemle, and we're hoping to do that this week? Was that what I understood? Okay.
Prior to the Thursday committee?
Yeah. So I guess what I am proposing, again, it's Tuesday, is that... Because I had indicated to Chief Schwemle that we were going to have this on Thursday's agenda, of course, I always refer to it as, you know, two thirteen dash twenty twenty-three, and now it's taken on a different number. Do I want to, do we want to not have it on the agenda for Thursday?
It's an open project anyway, so you can make that decision on Thursday.
So, so just so that, you know, for transparency purposes, this matter on the six man, I'm not going to say it right, but minimum six men will not be on the Health and Safety Committee meeting agenda this Thursday. We will place it on the Health and Safety Committee agenda once you, the union and the administration have met and have something to come back to us to see if it warrants, or to see what it warrants. Is that?
That's great. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I need a motion to adjourn?
Second.
Okay, Kevin was first, Aaron was second. All in favor?
Aye.
I oppose. We're adjourned at eight thirty-seven PM.